I would do some waking, just to forget.
I was trying to take a nap, but I woke up and started moving around and trying to stretch and do whatever, so it helped a little. Yeah. I put on my shirt and started sweating immediately, but you know.
Yeah. Once again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We welcome you to our town council phase of our debate evening. We again thank the committee who has done such an expert job of organizing this event and the candidates for their willingness to participate. So we'll begin by briefly introducing the candidates. From your left to right, Mr. Noel Benson, Mr. Jack Burns, Mr. Randy Ayton, and Mr. Tom Keniston. We'll begin with 90-second opening statements and we'll start at the left and move right, so Mr. Benson will begin.
All right, thank you so much. I believe Springdale needs a more open, balanced, and independent approach to decision-making. For too long, we've had the same voices guiding the same agenda without much objectivity or accountability. I don't have those ties or alliances, and that independence matters because it means I can look at every issue with fresh eyes focused only on what's best for Springdale. We have some challenges ahead: housing, fiscal management, business development, infrastructure, especially water and sewer, and these decisions will shape the kind of town we become, and we need to be thinking long-term to make sure we're managing our money wisely. I'd also like to see more openness, more transparency, and genuine communication between residents and town leadership. People shouldn't feel like decisions have already been made before the meetings even start. Everyone should feel like their input matters and have opportunities to contribute to town council decisions in real time. I believe in creative problem-solving. Not everything has to cost a fortune. Sometimes, small, smart ideas like a Springdale app can make a real difference in how we connect and support each other. So tonight, I hope we can talk about how to bring fresh ideas, a fresh perspective, real independence, and common-sense solutions to Springdale because caring about this town sometimes means being ready for change. Thank you.
Mr. Burns.
I guess I just wanted to start by letting people know a little bit about who I am, and I'm a longtime resident of Springdale. I've now been here over 40 years. I retired from Zion National Park after a 36-year career. I currently serve as a volunteer, and I have a deep-seated love for Springdale. As a resident, I, when I originally got on town council, I wanted to be the voice for people that we often don't see in the room, and I still want to be that voice. I think, for those of you who know me, I have a focus on trying to keep Springdale Springdale as long as we can, recognizing that we are at the doorstep of one of the most visited national parks in the system, and so there's lots of challenges in front of us. But I, sometimes I think, you know, we get a little too focused on what we don't have versus what we have, and I think we have an amazing community that is just full of residents that really care about this place. They want to be part of it, and I think the role of the town council is to serve as their voice, and that's not to say that we don't...
Thank you.
We don't.
Mr. Ayton, next.
I first came to Zion Canyon in 1977. I was climbing, was a rock climber, I was, stayed in the Watchman Campground for a month, climbed here, came into Springdale, small, little town, and at the time, I was living in my van, just trailing around, unit-climbing, bum, working. I'm an engineer, do contract work, was doing contract work. In 77, I also met some other climbers in there who were instructors for the National Leadership School, and through them, I became an instructor for Noel's National Leadership School. And so my work kind of always took me away, and in 1979, I got tired of living in my van, thought I need to find someplace I want to live, and I'm a little bit slow, so I kind of thought of anything, "Wait, dude, you keep coming back to this place. Maybe you should look at Springdale as a place to live," and so I moved here. And I have ended up buying my property in 1981. I started building my house in 1982, and it's almost finished. I was kind of building it as I had the money.
Mr. Keniston.
I want to thank the committee, John Darcy, Adrian, Judith, and Robin, for what you've done for us tonight, and everyone in the community for being here. I'm Tom Keniston. I'm running for Springdale Town Council. I'd like to build a better community together. I come from a problem-solving work background. I've learned that the best solutions come from listening to all stakeholders and then following proper processes to get the best outcomes. My five years of involvement in town government, starting with the Red Hawk subdivision challenges, had given me direct government experience. I've served on the Red Hawk HOA Board, the Housing Committee, and currently is Chair of the Planning Commission. My background as a problem solver offers unique insights into town processes. I believe every major project requires both expert guidance and meaningful stakeholder participation. For all major decisions in Springdale, we must follow a set process and ensure due diligence is used before any decisions are made. I believe the town council lacks someone who focuses on ensuring that all agenda items have been fully vetted before they're approved. As your town council member, I promise to make fully informed decisions using careful diligence and ensuring all relevant stakeholders are invited to participate to work on successful outcomes together.
Thank you. We'll proceed now with questions, as we did in our first session, and we remind you to please refrain from any response or reaction until after our candidates have made their closing statements at the end in order to maximize their time to answer the questions. I'll read the questions, and we'll alternate the order in which I call on you by each question. So the first question is, what would you like to champion as your signature project? And we'll start with Mr. Burns.
Well, I am currently Chair of the Art Review Board, which is a new committee that has been formed, and I think Springdale has always kind of teetered on the point of being recognized as an artist community, and this is something that's kind of new. We've got a great committee that we currently have formed. We just did a site visit the other day to look at potential locations for sculpture in Springdale as part of public art. We're working on a public art plan, so I'm pretty stoked about that, and I would like to stay involved in that.
Mr. Ayton, what would you like to champion as your signature project?
One thing that I have brought to Springdale that I'm really proud of, and I want to keep working on this, is the Utah Renewable Communities. That is a bill that the state legislature passed which allows communities in Utah to get all their energy from 100% renewable sources. Springdale is the only community, there's 19 communities in that, Springdale is the only one in southern Utah that became part of that. I brought it to the council. The council thought it was a great idea. We are, we are working toward that, so by 2030, we should be getting all of our energy that we use in Springdale from renewable energy sources.
Yours to get your project, Mr. Keniston.
My wife and I moved here eight years ago into the Red Hawk subdivision, which is a mix of affordable and market-rate homes, and I discovered right away that the project was in trouble. It needed to be resurrected in a certain way. So I've been working for five or six years now to get this back on track. We have a developer selected, and the two homes that have been constructed are in the process of being sold to affordable buyers. The five parcels that need homes on them, we've run into some problems, but we're reconfiguring the makeup of the homes, the size, and the configurations so that they're affordable to our workforce in town, and we hope to get those underway this next year. There's various challenges with that.
Mr. Benson, what would you like to champion as your signature project?
Gosh, there's a few. You know, a lot, the town leaders here have said consistently that they don't want to be in the housing business, but they talk quite a bit about improving affordability and workforce housing availability, and the truth is that we are already in the housing business, and we have been for some time, and I think we need to acknowledge that. I think we need to do it well because we've made some poor decisions in trying to solve those problems. And so forming an official housing authority, because right now, the de facto is the town council, and they don't have the background necessary for that type of stuff, so we need to make up a housing authority that actually has real experience to help guide our town for practical, effective solutions for our housing problems. Thanks.
Thank you. Next question. What is the single most pressing issue in Springdale today, and how would you address it if elected? Mr. Ayton.
I think it's workforce housing. I think we have, since I've been here, when I first came here, a lot of the community was made up of people who worked here, had businesses here, or worked in the park, and it's changed. And we are, I've said this in one of the town council meetings, we have approximately a third of our residential housing is second homes, and the other two-thirds is a lot of older retired people like me, and I think we need, our general plan says it really clearly in the housing section of the general plan, we need to diversify, and it says in the general plan, it will benefit the town to have the people who are working here, living here, to have a younger population.
Mr. Keniston, the single most pressing issue, and how would you address it?
I think there are two pressing issues right now. I agree with Randy that workforce housing is a very important issue for the town's future. I also think the town council needs someone who can provide an objective review to ensure all stakeholders are listened to, so that our residents have, you know, someone that can listen to their concerns, and that all processes and protocols have been followed before decisions are made. We need to learn how to apply the brakes before final decisions are made if a protocol has not been followed. It's been my observation that this expertise on the town council may be lacking, and I think that this gap needs to be filled. Recently, we terminated the contract for our housing provider for Trapper Circle, and instead of going through the RFP and the full vetting.
Mr. Benson, the single most pressing issue, and how would you address it?
Well, since I already talked about housing, I'm going to talk about fiscal management of our money. I think, you know, it's pretty clear that, you know, we have a lot of projects that some of us want to accomplish, but we also have quite a bit of debt. Our cash reserves are going down while these projects keep stacking up. We need to focus our money on what really matters. We need to make sure that the infrastructure is set. You know, we have a long-term project that was originally slated for 2037 to replace a sewer pipe from about, you know, the Park Cafe all the way down, and that could move up to even this decade, but it might be slated for 2032. And we continue to take on more bond debt, and we have all these projects that are going to require more and more debt, and so I really think that we need to focus on the infrastructure, we need to focus on housing, and focus on projects that actually will benefit the residents.
Mr. Burns, the single most pressing issue, and how would you address it?
I think probably I'm going to switch from workforce housing to attainable housing. I think unfortunately, Springdale has become kind of an elitist community where you can only, if you can afford it, you can live here, which is kind of sad commentary. When I first came here, the first house that I rented was for $160 a month, and those days are long gone, but I think many of the people in this room who have children would like to have their kids live closer to them, and that's really not an option. So, you know, we're kind of set up for people to go under a mountain of debt just out of necessity. I want to quickly mention what I think is an incredibly pressing need that I think is kind of a silent killer, and that's what's going on with Zion National Park as we speak. I believe that there is a planned effort.
Next question. While serving as a public official, what was your biggest regret and what was your biggest success? We'll start with Mr. Keniston.
I worked on the transient lodging overlay committee, and we put a lot of effort into crafting an ordinance that would prevent the continued conversion of homes and businesses into nightly rental, and we implemented an ordinance, and pretty much right away, we discovered that there were some loopholes, some things that we hadn't done correctly. It took us probably six months or so to recognize that and to revisit that, to tighten up those loopholes, so I wish we'd been able to address that faster than we did.
And your biggest success?
Best success? There've been a lot of things that I've worked on. I've been very proud of the...
Tyranny of time, but it is as it is.
The night sky ordinance.
Mr. Benson, as a public official, biggest regret and biggest success?
So when I was on the Planning Commission, there was one thing that was glaring to me, and that was, a lot of these development agreements that we've done in the past didn't have any timelines on them, and so we would get it, get together with the developer and figure something out, and they would get approved for, let's say, 200 transient lodging units without an expiration date, and they wouldn't build those right away, and then some years later, we'd do another one of those things, and they wouldn't build those right away. And so at this point, we have over 300 nightly rental units that are approved, that have no time expiration, that we cannot stop. They are already approved. So, you know, I really think that, you know, I championed for language to put in time limits for all those types of agreements, although there's no guarantee because each development agreement, each settlement agreement is different, but I believe that is a huge factor going forward so we can realize the decisions that we've actually made. And then the other one was...
Biggest success, would you say?
That was my biggest success.
Okay.
Because I championed for an ordinance change that put language in that does require time limits for new development agreements and zone changes.
Mr. Burns, as a public official, what was your biggest regret and what was your biggest success?
I think my biggest regret is, a number of you have heard me say periodically that if you don't like what you see happening in Springdale, you don't have to look any further than the ordinance that allows it. And so I have great concern on if we have a glide path in effect that protects the canyon corridor as you come through town, and I suggested that we put a limit on building height so that we're not looking at all two-story structures throughout our town, that we have a mix of heights. I regret that I gave up on that conversation too soon. I hope that we can revisit that. I think it scared a few people, but I think that it is a worthwhile venture for the long-term protection of the corridor through Springdale.
Mr. Ayton, as a public official, biggest regret, biggest success?
Again, I think that the, getting a diverse community here of workers and not getting that pass through in a way that, I've seen a big change. And one of the things that we tried early on that I really thought might work was something called cottage housing overlays. It was going to create some small homes that hopefully would be affordable for people who were working here. Didn't work, and it's kind of the, the way ordinances go. We have tried over the years to do the best we can for Springdale. The developers and other people are able to find those loopholes, and, you know, it would be nice to find the perfect office. The success was, what I mentioned before, the Utah Renewable Communities program we're part of.
Next question. What steps would you take to make the town's budgeting and financial decisions more easily understood by the residents, and how would you prioritize spending? We'll begin with Mr. Benson.
Well, I think, you know, the way that towns do their budgets is very, very complicated. We have all these different buckets of funds, and we have all these different buckets of expenditures, and it's really confusing to understand how much of our unrestricted assets we have, and so when we have these big expenditures, nobody really understands. I don't even think the council understands. I'm sure Rick Wixson does, and so I believe that a budget-at-a-glance summary should be included, really every month with a purchasing report, every year with the audit report that we get, and any chance we get to summarize these large purchases and expenditures, I think we need to do that. Is there another part to that question?
Prioritization of spending.
Yeah, infrastructure has got to be number one. You know, I mentioned earlier that we have these huge sewer projects that have to get done, and so I think we need to look at that first to make sure our long-term health as a town is there.
Mr. Burns, two parts. How would you make the town's budgeting and financial decisions more easily understood, and how would you prioritize spending?
Well, I agree with Noel that our budget is incredibly hard to understand. I mean, it's just kind of so massive, so that it comes in front of us. I think it would be much easier if we had some kind of an executive summary to look at, and then as needed, dig down into it a little bit deeper. The, and we've talked about this in the past, and whether it's, you know, something that becomes more tabulated and just easier for us to look at. The prioritization of spending, I think it definitely is infrastructure, it's health, life, safety, and then I think we need to look at adequate staffing. There is a lot more going on in this town than I think most people realize, and the staff is relatively low, so I think we need to look at that.
Mr. Ayton, steps to make the town's budgeting and financial systems more easily understood, and how would you prioritize spending?
I'm an engineer, I understand math. Budgets scare the hell out of me. I have, I have spent a lot of time with Rick going through budgets and trying to understand them. I don't know, other than requiring the town council to go back and everybody to get an MBA, how we're going to understand budget more than, better than we do right now. I, in terms of priorities, I, I really do feel like we have done a good job of getting land that's come up, like the Land Boulevard, like the River Park, and I want us to stay on top of things like that, finding opportunities to create open space for people.
Mr. Keniston, steps to improve the understanding of budgeting and financing, and what would you do to prioritize spending?
I come from a background working in various corporate offices at large corporations, and I have an MBA. I understand financial statements. From my history, I was very familiar with creating reports from databases to highlight financial, you know, summary information or, you know, obtain that information using report writers that could be done in 15 minutes or so. I think that if we can, it's not something that we can do immediately, but if we can work toward that as a goal to download the financial data into some sort of database, even if it's a spreadsheet, SQL or other report writers can work off of that to create the data that we need. As for spending, I think that we need to prioritize infrastructure over amenities, and with amenities, we need to carefully evaluate based on public input, which amenities are important to the community.
Next question. Describe the how and why of a public discussion that changed your mind on a vote while either serving on the Planning Commission or Town Council. Mr. Keniston, first.
Working, I've been on Planning Commission for five years, two years as Chair, and there's been a number of times when I go to a meeting, and I'm pretty sure I'm going to vote a certain way, and we'll discuss, and then we'll get public input, and with the public info, we'll get information that we weren't familiar with, and it will totally change the dynamic, and that's why I'm all for doing what we can to seek public input. When we have an agenda item coming up, I think that we should reach out to the community that's most affected by whatever that agenda item is and seek their input, have town staff go and talk to them, and encourage them to come to the meeting to send in questions, and I think that any questions that are sent in, either at the meeting or via email, that they all should be answered in, you know, in the, using the same amount of diligence that the public placed.
Mr. Ayton, a public discussion that changed your mind on a vote while on the Planning Commission or Town Council?
Yeah, and I'm not going to be able to pull up any one thing, but I would agree with Tom. We get a, as a council member, we get very detailed information about each of the agenda items from staff, and, you know, it's, sometimes it's 200 pages of reading that we do before. So I feel like I'm pretty well-informed, and I feel like I have a pretty good idea of how I'm going to vote, but then I get to the meeting, and I hear the perspective of another council member or the perspective of somebody from the audience, and it has often changed my vote, and I think that's an important thing for any council member to do, to not just come in and put blinders on and decide, "I'm going to vote this way." You need to listen to the way people have looked at each individual issue because it'll be different than yours.
Mr. Burns, how and why of a public discussion that changed your mind on a vote while on the Planning Commission or Town Council?
I guess I never thought the suggestion of having a history center would get people so riled up, but it did, and part of that reason was where the first location was proposed, that, which was down at the River Park, and I actually supported that, and I think the more that we heard from town residents, and I think all of us in the room who visit the River Park, we all love it, we really don't want to see it change too much. That would have been a pretty huge change to put a history center down there. So I did change my vote on that, and I personally still think that there is a place for a history center in this town, but it certainly was not at the River Park.
Mr. Benson, a public discussion that changed your vote or mind and vote on a matter before the Planning Commission or Town Council?
The things that come to mind, there was a thing on planning where we had to decide what long-term rentals meant as far as how many days, and the town, the state was mandating it had to be, you know, 30 days or more, I suppose, and we could put it up to 90 days, And we could put it up to 90 days, so we could make sure that any long-term rental was considered 90 days or more. And with all the transient lodging and the Airbnb, you know, history that we've had in this town, I felt immediately that we should put it as far out as possible. So I was championing immediately for the 90 days. And then we got some really good input from the community, and they were explaining how they have a particular property that they would rent out 30 days at a time, and how wonderful that was for a lot of the reasons, for family reasons. And that completely changed my vote, and I reduced that down to 30 days because that seemed quite logical to me, and I didn't wanna, what they were doing was appropriate for our town, and so I wanted to support that.
Next question. Do you believe the town government has a responsibility to help ensure attainable affordable housing is available? Mr. Ayton?
I guess I keep talking about workforce housing. So obviously, that's an important thing to me. I think the government can only do so much. We have a, a narrow strip of private land here in Springdale, surrounded by National Park or federal land. So there is a limited amount we can do. But I think we should keep trying to find ways to diversify our population, to make it possible for people who are working here or are not making that much money be able to live here if they want to live here. And there's a lot of good reasons for that, but I think that's, that's what I would say.
Mr. Burns, does the town government have a responsibility to help ensure affordable attainable housing is available?
Yeah, I think for the long-term longevity of a community, you have to look at, everybody needs a place to live. I don't, I, you know, I strongly don't believe that Springdale should be a place where people live who can only afford to be here. And I think we often overlook the real backbone of a community, and that is the people who are serving food and working in our retail shops and, and the day-to-day people who come here and make this, this community thrive. They have a right to have a place to live. And so I think, as was previously mentioned, we have a community that's aging out. We need to find a way to welcome families into this community that have young children. And I think that's important for our long-term survival as a community.
Mr. Benson, does the community, does the town government have a responsibility to help ensure attainable affordable housing is available?
That's a tough question, you know? I mean, the town has a obligation to, you know, make sure that our town is set for the future. And some of those things do involve housing. And we are a bit remote. And so, you know, like I mentioned earlier, having the housing authority in place to make good decisions that don't, you know, destroy neighborhoods and not touch other neighborhoods would be a really good thing for us to be doing. So I guess the short answer is yes, we do have a responsibility to our community to make sure that everyone is, has the opportunities that everyone else had when they moved here.
Mr. Kenniston, the role of government in ensuring availability of affordable housing?
Yeah, thank you. I think we do have a responsibility to do what we can to provide workforce housing to our, our people here, especially those who make a difference in the community. You know, not everyone wants to live here, but I think that people who make a difference in the community, and we can all know who they are, I think we can mostly agree on those, those people. They, they deserve a place to be here, you know? And it's important for the long-term survival and the, the, the good functioning of, of government and, and information for them to be part of the community. So I think we should prioritize those who provide a known benefit to the community and, you know, provide housing ownership like in Red Hawk or apartments in Trap or Circle.
This next question is a bit compound, so it comes in several parts. First part, please select the answer that best describes your position on whether the town of Springdale and its municipal billing authority should fund and build a facility to be leased as a medical clinic. Mr. Burns, first, I wholeheartedly support the project. I am uncertain if the project should happen, or I am opposed to the con, the project.
I wholeheartedly support it.
And please describe the data or reasoning that supports your position.
Well, I think we have to remind ourselves that, you know, sometimes we get kind of focused on just the people who live in Springdale. We've got 18,000 people going into Zion National Park on a daily basis. So, you know, I, I think that we have to just keep that in mind, that it's not just Springdale that has a need for a medical facility. The data, I don't know, you know, it's, I, I've thrown out a figure on a lot of people in Zion National Park, and, and a good portion of them could potentially need a medical facility. I think we also need to keep in mind as an aging community of residents in Springdale that would benefit from medical facilities that are closer to them than having to go down the hill. So, yeah.
Mr. Benson, the town building facility to lease as a medical clinic, wholeheartedly support, uncertain, or opposed to the project?
The current way it's structured, I oppose the project.
And please describe the data or reasoning that supports your position.
Well, I think it was mentioned earlier that we, the clinic, when it's open, only sees about 30 people a week. There's not a financial base to become profitable at the scale that we're looking at. Right now, we were already $1.4 million into a land purchase. The current plan is to build a 4,000-square-foot medical center at $624 a square foot. And the way we're supposed to fund that is with a bond. So we're gonna be 2.5 million plus in on the base price, we're gonna be 1.4 million in on the land purchase, which we bonded that as well. And then we're gonna pay another million dollars in interest on that bond. And that's the town manager's very, very optimistic terms for that loan. So I believe there's a place for a medical center, but we have to scale this down and make it more realistic.
Mr. Kenniston, as to the town building a facility to be leased as a clinic, wholehearted support, uncertain, or opposed?
I'm, I'm uncertain. I think that any facility that we have should be mostly self-sufficient. But I think maybe a larger review could be done to analyze how our services are provided now. We do have service from the, the EMTs of the fire department, and there are communities that have a medical vehicle that comes on a rotating basis. There might be other solutions than in building a, a big facility on town that does x-ray and prescriptions and physical therapy and that sort of thing. I think that we should look at that carefully to see whether our money is best spent on a facility or sold in through other ways, through other means.
Mr. Ayton, building a facility to be leased for a medical clinic, wholehearted support, uncertain, or opposed?
I wholeheartedly support it. I think, as, as Jack said, it's not just for the town, for the town residents, we have a lot of visitors here. And I think we have somewhat of an obligation to provide services for those people. And I think a clinic is one of them. Also, you know, when I'm on the town council, I'm supposed to have vision, and I look to the general plan for that vision. And the general plan talks about having a clinic, it talks about having a pharmacy, and that's what we're proposing here. So I think we need to look forward, look at the future, and I think we need a clinic here.
Next question. What actions would you take to address the town's aging infrastructure, specifically the matter of the sewer treatment failure? Mr. Benson first.
I'm sorry, what are you referring to? The failure of what?
Sewer treatment.
The filtration system that we put in?
I've got the word sewer treatment.
Can you just repeat the whole question again? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Let me read it again. What actions will you take to address the town's aging infrastructure, specifically the sewer treatment failure?
Well, I, I know recently that we just did a $5 million bond to put in a filtration system for our, for our wastewater. And when we did that, we didn't ask enough questions, we didn't get any sample results, we didn't get a second opinion, and we spent $5 million on the filtration system that didn't work. And now we're going back to retrofit the system to put in chemicals for $80,000 a year to coagulate the waste, so then these filters that we put in will catch and put, reintroduce, you know, clean water into the Virgin River. So, you know, that's just sort of a general idea that we need to ask more questions, we need to get second opinions, we're talking about huge purchases. And so that is the path that I would follow going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Kenniston, what actions would you take to address the town's aging infrastructure, specifically the sewer treatment failure?
I, I have great faith in the town staff, and I think that we need to support them in, in this endeavor. We, we've been working, or they've been working on this for some time, and, and they use the advice of a consultant. I'm, I'm not, I, in my, my business past, I've not had good success using consultants. But I think that our town staff can figure out a viable solution using the facility that we have now. I think that there may be the wrong media that's being used to filter the, the solids, possibly. This use of chemicals may be a, a short-term solution. I would hope for that. But I think that there'll be a solution that's forthcoming with the, the town staff doing research on the project.
Mr. Ayton, actions for the town's aging infrastructure and the sewer treatment failure in particular?
So one of my responsibilities on the town council is public works, which is water and sewer. When this happened, I got with the staff, and what I did do, not what I will do, but what I did do is I called Sunrise on the carpet. And we got the town manager and the public works, and I sat down with Sunrise, and we said, you made a mistake. You didn't do your job. How are you gonna correct this? And so what they are doing is, in this redesign of the chemical addition, they are doing all that for free. They are not charging us anything for that design. So it's not what I would do, it's what I did do.
Mr. Burns, aging infrastructure and the sewer treatment failure?
Yeah, I'm not sure I can add much more to what Randy just said, other than, you know, it, it's being addressed by town staff as we speak. I think the town manager has kept the town council up to date on the progress of that project. And, you know, big projects, things happen, and it's been brought to everybody's attention and it's being addressed. So it's, that's not my bailiwick. I'm not gonna second guess what, you know, anyone else has, has done that. You know, that's their area of expertise, not mine.
Thank you. Next question. What is your position on town employees working remotely? Mr. Burns?
Yeah, that's a tough one. I think town employees need to be on the job. And I certainly have a past of managing employees in the park where a number of, of my employees worked remotely, and it was never ideal. I think in some situations you can do it, but COVID really kind of sparked that whole idea of people working from home, and, and I know that it was very difficult to get them to come back into the workplace. But there is no substitute for a face-to-face conversation across the table. And so I, I think it's ideally they should be on the job.
Mr. Ayton, town employees working remotely?
I recognize that there are some times when it is important for an employee to be able to work remotely, but I wholeheartedly feel like the best work environment for the employee and for the town is to have the employees here. Because there's so much that kind of happens at the water cooler, as an example, just exchanges of information, ideas. And I think it's, it's important that our employees show up at the town office and do their work at the town office. Public Works, all of those people, obviously, they have to show up. The Ristries people, they, they can't work remotely.
Mr. Kenniston, town employees working remotely?
I, I came from a, a work model that was hybrid. And what my observation was that for some jobs, you're actually more productive off-site than you are onsite. But it's very job-dependent, and it depends on the individual. Some people are very disciplined and can work well from home. It's important to be able to monitor that work, ensure that they're answering calls and that they're, they're getting their work done. There needs to be some way to monitor the work. So it's very individual-dependent, and also the job itself, a lot of the jobs here require onsite. Zoom is an effective way to have meetings, but it's not a replacement for a person-to-person meeting, you know, for important meetings. So you need the ability to call people to the office in critical situations.
Mr. Benson, town workers remotely?
You know, I've been to the town hall a few times, there wasn't anybody there, and it was a little frustrating. I'm a bit surprised that Jack and Randy answered as they did, because we just approved recently a new contract for our town manager, which allows him the latitude to work from home. I would not have supported that. I do believe it's important to have everybody onsite. The only exceptions that I would make for that is, you know, one of the things we really need to look at is grant monies, and we need to have resources to get those grant monies. And sometimes we would collaborate with, with the county, even the state, to have people that are specialized in those things work on those types of things. And in that particular context, I would say remote working is fine. But otherwise, the full-time employees that actually work for Springdale, I think they should work here.
Thank you. Next question. What do you see as the advantages and disadvantages of the Barker River Park expansion? First, Mr. Ayton?
Well, I think we're gonna, one, it allows for a lot more open space there. We were able to get that property, a very good deal on that property, getting that property. And I think that having open space in town for both residents and also for visitors, because we have a lot of visitors that are walking on the sidewalks, having restrooms available for them, I think that is a, the sort of thing that I look for when I go visit other cities. I want to see parks, I want to see restrooms where I don't have to go in and beg some restaurant to let me use their restroom. So I'm, I'm very happy with that.
Mr. Kenniston, advantages and disadvantages of the park expansion?
I'm, I'm fully supportive of the town buying open space, you know, adding to the property in town that's not built on. I think that's a core idea that we need to facilitate going forward. The, it's always a good idea to add restrooms, particularly when there's a lot of people coming through. And Barker River Park, you know, is on the bike route, so it integrates with a lot of different things with the transportation model that we're looking at in town for the future. One caveat that I have is that I've heard from some people who use, there's some great, some people who, who go to the park repeatedly, they go there most every day, and they love it there, the trails and, and the vistas and all that. I think we need to be careful to include those people in the discussion to make sure that they're happy with, with what's gonna be done.
Mr. Burns, advantages, disadvantages of the park? Mr. Burns, advantages, disadvantages of the park expansion?
So, I'm heavily involved in that project. I think, you know, I don't see any disadvantage to enlarging park space. I think we have to recognize, especially for those of us who are there on a daily basis, that it is seeing a lot more visitors than we ever had before. I think that we are, as we work through this project, we are going to have to be really careful as to what the end product looks like, so that it doesn't change the character of the town or of the park. I think that, you know, we just simply have to recognize the fact that there will be some change. And I know that there's a few individuals who don't support the park, but I can only say that the changes that we are looking at is based on input that was received from residents who support the expansion of the river park. But we have to keep a close eye on it. We don't want to change the character too much.
Mr. Benson, advantages, disadvantage of the park expansion?
You know, I went to every single meeting regarding the park, everything I could get. And I really didn't see very many people that supported this park expansion. What I saw was a consultant company giving us choices. Do you like this or that better? What kind of shade do you want? Do you want a shade sale? Do you want trees? What do you want? There was never an opportunity or an option for, hey, let's not do any of that stuff. There was always an end game for expansion or construction. So I don't think that the residents as a whole got an opportunity to express themselves. And the feedback that I saw was that most people that used the park wanted maybe modest expansion, you know, maybe more bathrooms sounds great. But the real disadvantages are two things. One, it's going to cost over $2 million. We're probably going to bond that too and go into more debt. And the way it's structured right now, it appears it's going to be more for the tourists than the residents, and it's going to draw more of them to our park.
This next question's in two parts. First, in your view, are Springdale's ordinances being enforced evenly and effectively across the community? Mr. Kennison?
I believe they're being enforced evenly and effectively across all regions and all people.
Second question, or second part, are there any ordinances you believe should be reconsidered or removed altogether?
I'm not aware of anything other than possibly the workforce housing zone. There's been a lot of comments from people in town that they think that there needs to be more guardrails on its implementation. And I can agree with that. I think that any expansion of the workforce housing zone in town needs to have a buy-in from the community surrounding it. So we may want to put some additional parameters on that to include public outreach for a planned site that would have workforce housing on it.
Mr. Benson, are ordinances being enforced evenly and effectively?
Well, you know, to some extent, I'm not sure, really. Because if they're not being enforced, and I don't know about them, and I'm not really sure. I know that when I was on planning commission, there was a lot of feeling that they were not being enforced evenly. And some things are much harder to enforce than others. And we would get to a point where we wanted to maybe pass a change for the ordinance, but gosh, how are we going to enforce it? And my position was always, well, if that's something we want to do, let's do it. If enforcement becomes a problem, maybe we can change the way we're enforcing that particular thing. So I think overall, probably, they are being done evenly.
And are there any ordinances you believe should be reconsidered or removed altogether?
Yeah, the workforce housing overlay zone is something that we should absolutely not have on the books. And talking about guardrails, you know, basically, we're supposed to put this thing in motion and just trust that if a project does come in front of the council, that they're going to vote appropriately. But this particular ordinance, this particular zone change allowance gives you 16 units per acre density in residential neighborhoods with 15-foot setbacks. And I'm not comfortable with that. You know, I have an ADU in my home, on my property. It's one of only probably eight or nine in the whole community. I want to be part of the solution for workforce. We rent to workforce now. We love them. We feel grateful to have the opportunity to do that. But I don't want a 16-unit apartment building 15 feet away from a residential home. I believe that's wrong, and that ordinance should be removed.
Mr. Burns, are ordinances being enforced evenly and effectively?
I would say, let's hope so. I think for the most part, yes. I think we know that we need more boots on the ground enforcing our ordinances. So I'm not sure I could say 100% yes, but I would want to believe that for the most part. I think the ordinances are incredibly important that we have them. You know, there's a lot of discussion on this workforce housing. I just can't imagine why we would want to remove something that took so long to get into place, and that we know at least one business in town has been able to take advantage of that. I think as a town council, we gave our word that we would not. The location was critical. I mean, just because somebody comes before us with an application does not mean by any means that it's automatically approved. Location is key. Nobody wants to see, you know, a 16-unit development 15 feet from somebody's property. So location is key.
Why put that in the ordinance?
Mr. Ayton, are ordinances being evenly and effectively enforced?
As far as I know, they are. And I think anybody honestly has to get a qualified answer to that. We have good ordinances. For the most part, I think we are getting those ordinances followed. We certainly are, we have a, we have staff that are going out and checking on them. So as far as I can tell, yes.
Are there any that should be reconsidered or repealed?
I think, again, the ordinances are meant to be organic. At this point, I don't know of any that need to be repealed or changed. I think it's an ongoing thing. I think the town is changing, and it will continue to change. And I need, we need to keep our ordinances updated with what's happening with the town.
Next question. What actions will you take to increase public participation at town council meetings? And is there an opportunity to change the format of public hearings to encourage citizen participation? Mr. Benson?
Yeah, absolutely. That's something that's really important to me. You know, a lot of the folks here feel disconnected from the decisions that the town council makes. And that's maybe partially our fault, too, because we're not showing up to the meetings en masse like maybe sometimes we want to. But it feels like there's a wall there. And if the, if the hearing is a public hearing, it's a legislative decision, you have a chance to speak about it at the very beginning. And then they go through the process, and the council starts to deliberate. Well, during that deliberation, they ask questions, they raise up new points, they give residents more insight. And sometimes, that should allow them to reciprocate. And so I believe during deliberations with hearings, we need to stop at a certain point and allow more comments and questions to be asked by the public, so they can actually contribute to the decisions in real time.
Mr. Burns, what action could you take to increase public participation at town meetings, town council meetings? And is there an opportunity to change the format of hearings to encourage citizen participation?
Well, first, let me say, more often than not, we're looking at a bunch of empty chairs. So, I mean, it's kind of a two-way street in that we need residents to show up, get off Zoom, and come up and show up face-to-face, so that we can make more of a connection with people who are truly interested in what we're doing. A lot of what we're doing, it's pretty dry, you know? We're just, it's kind of day-to-day operational stuff. But I do believe that if there's any way that we can improve the manner in which we seek public input, I fully, you know, support that. We have to be really careful. A lot of times on our agendas, some of you know, we're going to have like 20 items. We've got to put a little bit of a limit on how much time somebody can get up and voice their opinion. That's just part of the reality of the job in what we're doing. But yeah, I mean, public input is a good thing.
Mr. Ayton, how do we increase public participation in council meetings? And is there an opportunity to change formats to do so?
The police are taking photographs of all of you, and if you don't show up at our next meeting, you will be fined. I, I wish there was a magic ball that had the perfect answer. It's, the only way to seem to get to people to come to meetings is to have something controversial on the agenda. Then we get people coming to meetings. Yes. So, I think we do a good job of letting people know what's going to be on the agenda. I am always, I will always answer phone and talk to people about anything that's coming up. I think it's your responsibility to show up. And I know I'm not always perfect at that either.
Mr. Kennison, increasing public participation, any change of formats to facilitate that?
I think we should do some work on changing the format, particularly the notice for the meeting. We receive a notice on Friday, and the meeting's on Wednesday. There's very little time, particularly for, you know, we're predominantly, the community's predominantly retirees, but we're all very active. We're out of town. We may not have access to email. So I think if we could give more notice, it would be beneficial for everyone, so they could participate before decisions are made. And for a lot of agenda items, we know upfront that there's going to be interest by the nearby residents. I think there should be an organized notice or a public outreach by the town staff to actually knock on doors if they need to, to inform them of what's happening, or send certified mail or something, so that they're aware of what's happening before they miss the meeting and something happens that they don't agree or would never have agreed with.
Thank you. Now, we'll transition to rapid-fire questions. These are all fairly short. They all call for a simple yes or no answer. And so I'll try to read it just once, if you'll each pay attention, and then I'll seek answers from each of you. First question. Do you know what the general plan is based on? Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Ayton?
Yes.
Mr. Kennison?
Yes.
Second. Do you support an issuance of bonds for land acquisition? Mr. Kennison?
Yes.
Mr. Ayton?
Absolutely.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Very rarely.
Do you think that Springdale should have regular formal internal audits to limit the potential for fraud? Mr. Benson?
I'm sorry?
Do you think that Springdale should have regular formal internal audits to limit the potential for fraud?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Ayton?
Yes.
Mr. Kennison?
No.
Do you support allowing, do you support allowing public participation via Zoom for planning commission and town council meetings? Mr. Kennison?
Yes.
Mr. Ayton?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
No.
Are you satisfied with Springdale's parking situation? Mr. Benson?
Yeah.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Ayton?
It's better than it was.
Mr. Kennison?
No.
With the new bus service between St. George and Springdale now running, would you make it a priority to boost ridership among workers? Mr. Kennison?
Yes.
Mr. Ayton?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Would you personally meet with riders and non-writers to understand their needs and lead a campaign to promote bus use? Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yep.
Mr. Ayton?
Absolutely.
And Mr. Kennison?
Yes.
Now, this next question has several elements. It's asking if you support the construction of given facilities. So we'll start with Mr. Kennison. Do you support construction of a new town hall?
No.
A recreation center?
No.
A maintenance building to replace the existing 50-year-old building?
Yes.
A new post office?
Yes.
A medical center?
Yes.
A history center?
No.
Additional hiking and biking trails?
Yes.
And lastly, Barker River Park expansion project?
No.
Mr. Ayton, a new town hall?
Yes.
A recreation center?
No.
A maintenance building to replace the 15-year-old, 50-year-old building?
Absolutely.
A new post office?
Yes.
A medical center?
Yes.
A history center?
Possibly.
Additional hiking and biking trails?
Yes.
Barker River Park expansion project?
Yes.
Mr. Burns, do you support construction of a new town hall?
Yes.
A recreation center?
No.
A maintenance building?
Yes.
A new post office?
Yes.
Medical center?
Yes.
History center?
Yes.
Additional hiking and biking trails?
Yes.
Lastly, Barker River Park expansion project?
Yes.
Lastly, Mr. Benson, do you support construction of a new town hall?
No.
Recreation center?
No.
Maintenance building?
Yes.
New post office?
No.
Medical center?
Smaller.
History center?
No.
Additional hiking and biking trails?
Sure.
And Barker River Park expansion project?
No.
Do you support a live person answering the main town phone number? Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Ayton?
Yes.
Mr. Kennison?
No.
And that leaves us, takes us to our time limit here. We'll now conclude by having 90-second closing statements from each candidate, and we'll start with Mr. Kennison.
Thank you to the Springdale Community Forum, and for all the dedicated community members who participated in tonight's event. I know that I don't need to remind you that your continued engagement with our town's democratic process is truly vital to the success of Springdale. For the council members and the mayor or your candidate that you choose, will be representative instrumental in providing the amenities and services that we've come to rely on. Tonight, I'd like to highlight a contrast that defines this election. The choice before us is clear. We can either continue down the path of the current status quo, which at times can lead to reactive, rushed decisions and a feeling of community exclusion, or we can embrace a new direction. This new direction is rooted in transparent, informed decision-making, using processes that are tailor-made to require due diligence through the use of subject matter experts when needed, and local residents to achieve successful outcomes for our town. I'm running for this position to ensure that we always make fully informed decisions. With a focus on prior due diligence, my campaign is centered on establishing a well-rounded process for the town's major decisions regarding how money is spent and what services are provided. Some residents may believe that we should resign ourselves to accepting what is offered by our council and the little bits of information that they decide to share. I believe in a different paradigm. I believe that government meetings and processes should welcome participation, that any question should always result in complete answers, that open discussions should always occur, and communication should always flow to and be available to any resident who has interest enough to ask. This new paradigm will proactively guarantee that all relevant voices will be heard, that long-term residents, business owners, town committee members, technical town experts, and others at the decision-making table early on to provide critical input, that no voices will be minimized. We shall seek residential expertise that exists right now in our retiring base to help guide town projects from inception to completion. For we have a community with deep understanding of the many subjects and disciplines that can provide much better solutions than the high-priced consultants who view us simply as a place to make high price fees. We will rely on verifiable data and expert advice before a vote is taken. I believe this focus on town participation will lead to higher standard for government here in Springdale. Ultimately, a vote for me is a vote for the careful and effective use of our tax revenue. And by adopting a diligent process, we ensure projects are designed right the first time, which will lead to the achievement of results that are fully aligned with the long-term articulated goals of our Springdale residents. These results will also align with the goals of the Springdale general plan. That's why I'm running for office.
Mr. Ayton, 90 seconds, please.
As you can see, I've done a lot of preparation to get ready for this. As you can see, I've done a lot of preparation to get ready for this. When I moved to Springdale, I had met a guy named Mark Mannard who had just bought a house in Springdale and was fixing it up, and it's now the Worthington Gallery. And I asked Mark if I could, could live there. And he said, sure, I'd love to have you live here, but I can't promise you a room because I'm gutting the house. So, I said, what if I put a teepee up in the backyard? And he said, perfect. So that's what I did. And I was using, I didn't have a post office box, so I was using his post office box. And I ended up getting a letter that was addressed to Randy Aton, teepee, Springdale, Utah. Didn't have a box number, didn't have a zip code, got in the right box. And I went, this is a community I think I want to live in. It was a community at that point that was very involved in town. When there was an earthquake on 9/292, the community came out to help people up on Balance Rock who were, had their houses destroyed. You know, we, we helped move equipment out of there, their belongings out of the apartments. That's, that's the way the community was at that time. And I think we still have a strong community, but I think we have a community, as I've mentioned, that is, that is changing, that is getting older, that is maybe not as involved. And that's why I really feel like we need to keep working as a town council, as the general plan tells us to do, to create housing for people who live and work, who work here. For a lot of years, I was doing contract work, and I was going away and work, and then I was coming back and I was working on my house. And I always kind of told myself that when I finally retire, I'm going to get on the planning commissioner and run for town council. And I was 70 years old, I was working on a job, and it hurt. And I just went, you know, I think it's time. And I got home and there was an announcement for the town council, and I ran because I wanted to give back to this town, because I love this town. I think this is, it's the best place I've ever lived. It's a place I'm going to die. I think I have a lot to give to the town council. I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. I have misspoken. It's not 90 seconds, it's three minutes, and our timekeeper's been far more accurate than I am.[938.79][938.79](Laughter). Both candidates so far have been granted their three minutes. Mr. Burns, your three minutes now, please.
First, let me say how much I've enjoyed serving on town council the past four years. It's been an honor to represent my community and learn more about the challenges of addressing the needs of a small community that's adjacent to the doorstep of one of the busiest national parks in the system. It's been a pleasure to work with our mayor, town council, town staff and our police, our police department, and I thank them for their good work and service. When I read some of the campaign messages from other candidates, I often read about what we can do better, and I agree. We can always do better. We are a work in progress. And I think that you've probably heard it tonight, that you'll find that among us, we have more in common than not. I appreciate the burst of energy and engagement by town residents during this campaign cycle, showing their interest in how our town operates. I encourage you to keep the momentum up. I think we often don't realize the power of a shared vision and how it can impact our daily lives and how each one of us can contribute to it. Much of the work that we do now is based on the foundation of decisions made by previous town leaders. I believe they did, as we do now, the best they could do at the time, recognizing that you make some right and you make some wrong decisions. I think it's safe to say that most of us in this room tonight came here for a familiar reason, and that is that we fell in love with the beauty of Zion National Park and we wanted to call this place home. I hope we can build upon what brings us together versus what separates us. I'm not coming to you with a bunch of campaign promises, other than I give you my word that I represent the residents and the business community in Springdale to the best of my ability. My decisions may not always support yours, but that doesn't mean that I haven't heard you. For those of you who know me, you know that I support moderate commercial and residential growth. I don't support large-scale commercial development. I believe our built environment should lie lightly on the land. I believe in water conservation and protection of our night sky and our scenic vistas. I want to keep Springdale as Springdale. It is our uniqueness that is what draws millions of visitors to us. I want to recognize Zion National Park as one of the lifelines that keeps our community viable. It needs our support now more than ever. And lastly, I want to say, as we narrow down the election day...[1128.25][1128.25](Laughter).
I commend you for your discipline.[1134.29][1134.29](Laughter). Mr. Benson, your three-minute statement, please.
All right. Well, first off, I want to say thank you to the forum and the community. You know, I was really worried about going over my time on my closing statement, but I covered a lot of the stuff that I was going to say, so that, that takes that pressure off. But, you know, I know we all care deeply about Springdale, and I think sometimes, you know, as I mentioned before, caring means recognizing when it's time for change. You know, one thing we talked about a lot was these projects such as the medical center. There are some, you know, great reasons to continue a project, you know, maybe a smaller scale, but a project like that. And, you know, I grew up in passing in California. When I was growing up, it was a blighted downtown, and they formed a reinvestment, you know, agency. And one of the things they did was to provide full-time employees working on procuring grant monies. And we are an extremely good candidate for a lot of these grant monies because we're rural, we have USDA to look at, and because of all the infrastructure stress that is put on our town because of all the tourists that come through. So I really feel like we need to focus on that to help fund some of these, some of these projects that might be really good. You know, this election shouldn't be about who's lived here the longest or who's the best political telemarketer, but who's willing to listen and collaborate and make the best choices for our future. There's, there's a fun story about a battleship captain, and I'm sure some of you know it, out at sea on a foggy night, and he sees a light directly in his path, and so he radios ahead, "Change your course 20 degrees to the north." Their reply comes back, "Change your course 20 degrees to the south." The captain says, "I am a captain. Change your course north." Their reply is calm, "I am a seaman, second class. Change your course south." Now the captain's heated and he shouts, "I am a battleship. Change your course immediately." Their reply comes back, "I am a lighthouse. Your call, buddy."[1261.11][1261.11](Laughter). I think, I think the lesson's simple there. You know, without clear information, even folks with the best intentions can make dangerous decisions. And when they're made in the dark, they often head for the rocks. Let's not do that. Let's have the courage to change course when it makes sense and move forward together in the light. I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, ladies and gentlemen, here in little old Springdale, Utah, you've witnessed a model of civility and candor that's worthy of emulation at every level of our government.[1297.75][1297.75](Applause). Thank you to our candidates. Let's have a round of applause for the committee who did so much work to put this together.[1313.11][1313.11](Applause). And with that, Darcy's going to come forward to close us up here.
Before you go.[1328.37][1328.37](Laughter). That's right. Let's give a round of applause to our moderator. He did just a fantastic job. Thank you. Kevin Jacobson. Okay, and I'll go super quick because I know everyone's been so good and patient sitting here and just listening to us talk at you. I just have a few housekeeping items that I wanted to mention. The first being is that, as you can probably plainly see, our meeting has been recorded. And so our intention is, any of you that want to go back and see it again, obviously you'll have the ability to do so, or our friends and neighbors that were unable to come today, they will have the ability to, to watch what, what transpired tonight. So we will put together a link, and that link will be available on the Facebook page and also the Springdale Sun. So we have a YouTube channel, which is Springdale Community Forum. It's a YouTube channel, so if you're super curious, you can go look for it yourself before that link comes out. But again, we, we did record this evening's event, and so you'll have an opportunity to see it again. I wanted to talk now about what comes next, which is you need to vote. And so we put together a voter information sheet, and there's just a few things on here. Those will be at the end of the table, so please take one before you go. I think one of the main things that has changed that I think's really important for everyone to know, because the mail-in ballots normally can be postmarked, and, and they have to be actually received by election day, which is November 4th. And so that's a little bit of a change. Don't just drop it in the mail the day before election, because chances are it's not going to get to the Washington County Clerk's Office, and then your vote would not be counted. So please be super conscientious of that. The ballots were dropped already, so you should start to see them within the next couple of days. So don't put it somewhere in your kitchen counter that you, you forget to find it. I mean, please take care of that right away and vote as soon as possible. And you can either mail it, or you can use the Dropbox, which the Town of Springdale Town Hall has a Dropbox where you can drop it off during normal business hours. Another close one is also the Hurricane City Branch Library, and they have one outside which is available to you 24 hours a day. So if you happen to be down there, just take it with you and drop it off in Hurricane. There's also a lot of them throughout the county, as you can imagine, but those two are probably the most convenient for us. There's early voting centers and vote, and vote centers that are at the Dixie Convention Center and the Hurricane Community Center. So on here, there's information on where you would go to get the specific hours, if you really like to go in person to vote, either to vote early or to vote on election day. If that's your preference, the county has that as an option for you. So any different, any additional information that you want about Springdale municipal elections, you can go to the Clerk's Office here at Town Hall, or also there's information on here for the state of Utah and also the county. So please pick up one of these. Lastly, I wanted to call out Robin. She was really good about calling the rest of us out, but she was obviously the catalyst to get this happen. And if it wasn't for her energy and enthusiasm and truly her gift of time to our community, this evening would not happen. So I would really like to call out Robin Chansey for all of her work.[1536.75][1536.75](Laughter). And then, of course, the candidates. They are candidates, but I think we need to remember that first and foremost, they are our friends and neighbors, and they all deserve our respect, they all deserve our admiration. I'm sure you can understand how very challenging it is to have been up here and also just to represent all of us as a community. It takes a tremendous amount of dedication, and we just really appreciate them for what they're doing for us. So thank you for all the candidates.[1570.87][1570.87](Applause). And then just lastly, just thank you all, because obviously the questions, as Robin mentioned, we have got over 120 of them, and we painstakingly went through them, hours and hours on end, to make sure that we really put together the very best program for you tonight that we could, that represented all of the questions and topics that you presented to us. So hopefully, we did a good job of that. And we would welcome your feedback, because we're hoping to keep the momentum of this going. So please give us the good, the bad, and the ugly. Really, really thank you all for your time, your participation, and please vote. Thank you.[1613.16][1613.16](Applause).[1614.16][1614.16](Crosstalk).
That means a lot, thank you. Absolutely. Good job. Oh, Chuck. We got it. Thanks, Chuck.
I know. Everybody's good. Yeah, I've been changing it. Great job. Thank you so much. That's actually not a bad, not a bad point at all. I mean, why not have more minds on the council? You know, so...
You did good.
You did too, man. Appreciate it, man. Puzzled, puzzled? Is that a puzzled? Can't take a chance, you know, especially with, with...
Why did you guys all, the other guys? Why did you have to be four? Why couldn't it be three? It's not... I hope so. Last time it didn't feel that way, so this one feels different. Well, it felt, it felt like it mattered, you know?[1642.16]